Board member reports. That I have to know.
Uh, I got chance to scream, um, good evening, everybody. I got a chance to, uh, attend our MSBA regional meeting in Flat City on this week. And what if goes going and all of the different regions, uh, boards and two boards from around the district here. Uh, I would like to join our, my charitable spirit will give it a wonderful donation to West Beach or Nungan School teachers to help them work. And lastly, I attended the last, uh, two day in Harvey's sale zoom to the last drive of the year, uh, a group of wonderful people who helped listening to the, you can see what, uh, the community as a whole is contributing to those bodies. Thank you.
First, good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank, um, Mrs. Wamba, Clever Wamba and Miss Dr. Martin Knox for making me look tremendous and, uh, and the filming that they did, I, I'm absolutely, I had the perfect face for radio and they brought it, uh, alive in the, uh, convocation video. I don't know how they did it, but my wife totally thanked you guys for doing it. So I want to say thank you all for allowing me to be in there and, uh, doing my, my, uh, my premier Broadway film. I really thank you guys for letting me be a part in that. Um, and then I also had an opportunity to do some things with ad hoc, uh, group against crime and, um, and seeing how they operate and endorse some things with that. So I'm, I was, uh, extremely blessed to do that. I also got to do some mandated reporting things and catch up on that kind of thing. And, uh, during my hour of class, it was like so exuberating to, to get that done. So I really appreciate it and that, that's, that's the end of my report. So thank you guys. I think that's all of our reports. Um, monthly data review. That's the board reports. Superintendent.
So good evening, um, Chairman Newton, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the Raytown Quality School District. Uh, this evening, I just want to welcome everyone back to the 2024, 2025 school year. We kick the year off with an amazing convocation. And so I just want to thank the staff for breathing through the sun. The sun did not get the message not to come out as early as it did, but it did. And so, but I think the message was powerful. I think us coming together was collaborative and cheerful. And as I visit schools, I can see that it is carrying over. So I just want to commend our school-based leaders and our teachers and our support staff for the work that they've done in order to open our schools and to prepare for our students' return and their entry. I also want to say thank you to our students. I had my first luncheon with our new superintendent ambassadors, uh, in the things that we've been observing, they've actually echoed those sentiments by sharing with me what's happening in their world because remember children are our customers. And if we are failing our children, we're not doing our very best. So I just want to thank our student ambassador superintendent ambassadors for their work, uh, in partnering with us as we move through the year. Today, we sent home a letter, um, regarding, uh, information about school threats. Uh, unfortunately, when something happens in our nation, there are individuals who like to, uh, make light of it or to capitalize upon it. And I just want to stress and reiterate that there is never a time where we threaten the safety of individuals, that it is a joke, nor will it be tolerated or acceptable. And so we sent home communication today. If there's anyone who sees something, says something, you need to say something. We've put the information in for our courage to report. Uh, we received that information through the state police, through the courage to report, but we also receive information from you, our members of the community. So thank you for continuing to share the information with us. There's only one request that I have. When you see information, please do not forward it posted on Facebook because Facebook can't help you. Please make sure that we as district administrators or school-based leaders receive that information so we can begin to do the inquiry and to help with the investigation with our local law enforcement or national law agencies. Once you begin to forward that information, it loses its traction, if you will, and it's very difficult for us to go back to see where it originated. So I ask, I ask that you please make sure you make us aware by calling the school or calling the district office to share with us that information. Because when it gets posted on Facebook, it then begins to grow legs and it circulates and it makes it very difficult for us to trace where it came from. So please make sure we are staying vigilant and that we work harder together so that we can maintain an effective instructional operation here in Raytown Quality Schools while also maintaining the safety of our students. I will now transition to, to eight point two in the superintendent's report as Dr. Greiner will provide an update regarding the Raytown Quality School District Strategic Plan. Dr. Greiner?
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, Vice President Newton, members of the board. Thank you for having us tonight to provide a very brief update on the strategic plan and strategic plan projects that are occurring this year in the 2425 school year. Uh, just a quick review, uh, the strategic project plan dashboard is on our website along with our strategic plan. Uh, this is a great way to stay up to date on all of the projects happening around the district that support the district strategic plan. Here in 2425, there are over 40 projects happening around the district that are being led by a district office leadership from academics to facilities, finance, HR, communications, a lot of great work happening. And this dashboard that's on our website is a great way to stay connected with that work. Uh, if you, uh, utilize the plan numbers all the way to the right, those are active links that provide up-to-date, um, milestones and measures on each of the projects. Tonight, we have three projects we want to highlight. Uh, myself, uh, Dr. Calcara and Ms. Cleaver Wambel will be discussing, uh, one of the projects that each of us are championing this year. I'd like to spend just a few minutes talking about our strategic planning project number eight, which is our career academy transformation. Board, as you might remember, we spent time last year in phase one of that journey. And at the end of the year, we brought information to the board, overwhelming support from stakeholders at our high schools to, to move on to phase two of that, uh, transformation process. And so this year, uh, again, if we continue to proceed as we did in phase one, we will be able to accomplish phase two and phase three of the Ford Next Generation roadmap, which includes us envisioning together and beginning to plan for what the transformation to a career academy might look like. Many people are part of this discussion, including our community, but I do want to call out the members listed here on the project. Um, they've taken a very active role. Uh, I meet with this team a couple of times a month as well as with our Ford coaches, Mark and Lisa, and they've done a great job of helping, uh, get this off the ground and help us engage stakeholders to help us build, uh, a better high school experience for all of our students in Raytown. This is a busy slide, but again, these are the steps taken so far and steps planned for, for this year around phase two and phase three of our career academy transformation. Um, we will be reaching out, uh, to engage the community here in October for a first round of envisioning. So we are excited about that. We will be bringing, uh, staff, students, parents, community and business partners to the table over three days. And so again, we're excited about that work and, and know that it's going to bring, uh, better outcomes for our students and better outcomes for our community. Our goal for this project is to have at least 80% stakeholder agreement to move from phase two to phase three. That, uh, vote will take place around Christmas break, just before Christmas break. And then if we have support to move forward with phase three, we would begin that work in January and that would take us through, uh, the end of the school year. Again, we're going to look for at least 80% stakeholder agreement to move out of phase three and into phase four. I'd be happy to entertain any questions for the board about our career academy transformation project. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Dr. Calcara.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox and, uh, our wonderful community. Um, project number 21 is a focus on retention. Obviously staffing, um, all across, uh, our learning community has grown more difficult over the years. Uh, we've been saying for a couple of years now, retention is the new recruitment. Um, it is unlikely, uh, that we're going to staff in the same, with the same ease that we have in the past. And so finding ways to retain our staff is, uh, increasingly important. Um, one of those ways is to provide voice and agency, uh, again, across all layers of our learning community. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, we took on this, uh, employee journey mapping project, and that is to capture voices from our employees, um, at all points across the career from hire to retire. Um, this plan really starts to hone in on, uh, some groups that we've not collectively pulled, uh, or captured data from. Um, I do want to go back and say, you know, a voice and agency is extremely important. Uh, we need to collectively understand that the most, um, you know, our employees are among the most important things we can do to take care of after our students. Um, all of it is irrelevant if we don't have high-quality folks, um, that are keeping, uh, staffing our buildings across, uh, all layers of that organization. Um, we've done a lot to add voice, which, uh, we've added in the last couple of years, a, um, RQS, um, brand survey, and that is to capture what is the sentiment of those folks coming into our organization before they're even with us. Um, so I'll be sharing that with you with the board next month. Uh, we have two district climate and culture surveys that go out twice a year. Um, this year in this plan specifically, uh, looks at our facilities, operation, folks, um, to disaggregate, uh, data, uh, by department. And so we've done this with buildings and our certificated staff, but we've not done it with, say, custodians at a building, nutrition services at a building. Um, and so this is in transportation. And so this is going to allow us to collectively look at those voices in the same way that we look at other voices and see what is working well and what is not. Um, obviously, uh, we can never shy away from our own data. Um, there are positive things that our employees highlight to us, but there are also areas of needed improvement and, and, and capturing voice, um, helps us determine what those are and make the quality of work life for employees better. Um, another survey we'll be, um, adding this year is a stay survey. We do a really good job of talking to, uh, the folks who are exiting our learning community. So we have a really good idea of what they were going to say. Um, one of the things we'll be adding this year is a stay survey. What we don't do is talk to the folks who have been around 10, 15, 20 plus years to say, what is it about RQS that keeps you here year after year? Uh, so that will be one more layer of, uh, voice that we capture, uh, this year as well. Any questions about our, um, survey data that we are capturing this year? Thank you.
Good evening, Vice President Newton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. The Communications Department is happy to support a variety of our departments with their strategic plans, um, providing information on the website, producing videos, graphics and, um, flyers or any other communication they may need. I am the champion of plan 26, which is to create an active parent guardian organization at each school. Before the pandemic, um, we had a more involved, uh, parent teacher association organizations at each of the schools. Um, that is not so much the case now. So as Dr. Martin Knox says, we'll be thinking as if there is no box in trying to figure out how we can get, um, our parents and our communities back into our schools for these PTAs and PTOs. It may look unconventional and not what you're used to, um, but we know this is important because, um, these PTAs, PTOs help strengthen, uh, school family relationships. They help build the community around the school. They are also a base for volunteers. They increase student achievement and student attendance. So this is a snapshot of how we will get that work done or how we expect to get that done. Um, I'll be working with Melanie Olson Cox, who is the Assistant Director in the Communications Department, leaning on our assistant superintendent, superintendents a bit, and then finally our principals as we get, um, the plan more concrete. Um, we have a lot of stakeholders that we want to hear from because we want to know about the barriers that families may be facing that are keeping them from being involved in these organizations. Um, we'll get feedback from principals, staff, um, because we know that's important so we can address whatever challenges they may have. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Got a question. So with the, uh, PTA, um, opportunities that we do have at schools so far, will, will we be surveying them to kind of see what they do that's been effective as well as impactful?
Yes. Um, so we'll first survey, um, principals to, um, get their perspective. That's actually the first thing that we're going to do. Uh, but we also want to talk to those schools that have active, um, PTAs and PTOs. And then, um, we want to talk to parents, see if we can get some parents, some feedback from parents who aren't able to participate to get their feedback to, so we can know what's keeping them, what may be preventing them from participating.
Question, uh, what? This person, or is there any thought, um, Gavin, something like Zoom meeting?
Absolutely.
Or here?
Absolutely. I think that's one of the things that we've learned from the pandemic. Um, meetings that I participate in now are hybrid. So some we have people in person and then we have a link so people can participate. Um, if you have to take your child to soccer practice and you can't get there, but you're sitting there, you can just log on on your phone. So that is absolutely one of the things we'll, we'll be looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Cleaver Wambel, uh, Dr. Calcara and Dr. Greiner. The next item under the superintendent's report is item eight point three, which is what we've all been waiting for, uh, to hear the voice of our amazing student representatives.
There we go. All right. Good evening, Board, Vice President Newton and Superintendent Dr. Martin Knox. I'm Chase Durnier, Student Council President at Raytown High. Unfortunately, our other two executive board members could not make it tonight, but are looking forward to being here next month. The school year has started off strong with many events and upcoming activities. This year, our student council has restructured our officer positions. We now consist of our exec board, a president, me, vice president, Rayco Groves, and public relations officer, Maya Wilson. We have four committee chairs, events with Savannah Young and Jaden Fountain, spirit with Aiden Barnett and Maia Stewart, service with Nicole Higgs and Cordae Howard, and marketing with Audrey Turner. This restructure has already proven to be very effective within our council, which is great news. The week before the school year started, student council members helped teachers with classroom setup and various tasks around the school. The turnout was great and we have many new council members this year. Starting out our school year, we welcomed in the freshmen at freshman orientation, which was ran by student council. We had an assembly and an activity fair showing all of the students everything Raytown High has to offer. We spent the past couple of weeks prepping for the Battle of the Birds. We put on an assembly that included dance, cheer, band, student council, and the football team and decked out our school with posters and Spirit Week promotion. The student body came together and had lots of fun, and I wanted to thank Dr. Martin Knox for attending the assembly. We loved having you there. Now, these next couple of weeks, we are pointing our focus on homecoming. Tickets went on sale today. The homecoming dance will be held September 21st from seven to 10 p.m. in the new Raytown High auxiliary, auxiliary gym with a theme being Arabian Nights. We have lots of other activities coming up and are excited to update the board next month. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Madison Dansby. I'm a representative of student council at Raytown South Executive Board. And so this year we do have a new student council, um, board structure as well. We don't have roles in our student council. We actually have just student exec leader, exec, like leadership executives. And then, um, the new, um, structure is due to our influx of upperclassmen members and our other, um, members going to Herndon and some tech opportunities, which is great. And I love that. So this year's, um, Raytown South Student Council Representatives are actually me, Madison Dansby, Chanel Henderson, Anaya Zamare and Mortes. And with Anaya and Mortes should be here next time. That's all for me and next there's Anaya.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anaya Gilmore. So I'm going to be talking about our past assemblies. So, so far we had two assemblies go by in like two weeks of our first official weeks of school. We had our welcome back assembly and then we had our rival game assembly. So basically at our welcome back assembly, we just explained to the students the new policies, our new rules of school and just like what's going on and what's going to happen to move forward for everyone can have a better attendance rate this year and also people be involved in school more just in like activities and things as that. So we, at our assembly, we had volleyball. We also had, um, sports and other teachers talk about activities and how it's still not late to join so students can get more involved with school. So I'm not going to lie, our first assembly was busy because we have new construction going on at our schools. So it was harder getting students down. We had, didn't have the same timeframe and everything as past assemblies, but we're working on it to be better. And our rival game assembly went way better than our welcome back assembly. It wasn't rushed or anything and we had a lot more students involved and engaged in what we were doing. We had Stuco members playing against teachers. So we were also involved. We also had students that just were all around the school, not just focusing on athletes or us as a representative, um, just school involvement, just making sure everyone, you know, gets the gist of being in the assembly and feeling like they're at home, you know, involved with the school. But that is it so far for our assemblies and anything else. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you. Great job.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chanel Henderson. I'm going to be informing you all about our homecoming preparations. The current date for our homecoming is September 28th and it will be outside, um, it's closer to our football field in like the concession area. The timeframe that we're running our homecoming from is seven p.m. to 10 p.m. and the gate will be closing at eight 30 p.m. Our student body will be voting for the final, um, the final option and we will officially have a theme by Friday, which is September. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was still focused on the students. That concludes the superintendent's report, uh, at this time, Vice Chair Newton.
Good evening again. This evening, we are recognizing parents as teachers as our ray of hope and we want to congratulate Parents as Teachers, the program for achieving a family retention rate of 91%. This number represents a commitment to their team to providing high-quality and in-demand resources to our youngest learners and their family, families. Their medication. We have a video. We'll just go to the video. Let's watch this short video about parents and teachers.
Friends with one of, before I was a parent educator and I was friends with one of the people in the program. And I said, just think of the impact that we can have. And they kind of, you know, laughed. He goes, you must think we can work miracles. And I thought about it for like two seconds and I said, I absolutely do.
It starts at birth all the way till they are school age. Every parent brings home a new baby and thinks, oh my goodness, what am I doing? Why didn't this baby come with a manual? Parents as teachers, while it's not a manual, it's an opportunity for someone to come alongside and support every new family on that journey.
Their goal is to partner with families and help kids grow and help families grow and just an amazing team to work with, so supportive, um, no pressure, just, you know, a support system. So everybody can use more support. It's just a great free resource that we have available here in Raytown.
Parent educators have many things that they're managing. They are preparing and planning for visits with families, gathering materials, activities, toys that they're going to take with them on a home visit. They are going into family homes and engaging with families and their kids, really being hands-on with the family and supporting the parents in that way. They're doing a lot of documentation because they're noticing milestones, they're noticing achievements and they are taking the time to note those things so that they can continue to encourage.
So I have one family that has a couple of little kiddos. One day, the two-year-old wasn't going to cooperate, she was going to throw a fit. The mom just kind of scooped her up, just said, here, just breathe with me. And she hugged her tight, started taking deep breaths. And so the little girl was pressed against her chest. And eventually, uh, her breathing starts to match her mom's and she calms down. And to me, that was like a magical moment. And that mom in that moment was like my hero.
Parents have skills that they don't realize that they have.
Every parent knows that it's a really difficult job and you need support in parenting. And it's amazing to me to get to see the difference that it makes. I love getting to see families recognize and identify when they have done something that's helped their child learn a new skill, when their support has made an impact on their kid's learning and development and they recognize their own role in that. It's really empowering for parents and I love getting to see and witness that with families. I think we all appreciate knowing that we are not alone in whatever challenge we might be facing. So I think being a ray of hope in the Raytown community is about being connected to one another.
There's families that we've known, that we've had connections with for years and I, I just love being a part of their lives.
I would like to invite our parents as teachers staff up.
We have no public comments tonight. Um, board committee reports. Um, finance committee. Let's. Policy, policy review committee. Capital improvement committee. Community engagement committee. Will. Think there's a meeting coming up on the sixteenth. Community engagement at the sixth. That's the, that's, that's not like that. Oh, I'm sorry. Professional development committee.
Yes, we have a report. Let me just one second. So the curriculum and professional learning committee met this afternoon. So the Curriculum and Professional Learning Committee met this afternoon. And that, the people that made up that committee at that meeting, Dr. Greiner, Dr. Moore, Mr. Britt, and Ms. Bassett. And so you guys have already heard a little bit about the strategic dashboard. And so we had some conversation about what those projects look like. And as you heard, there are over forty projects, and then the vision, the deliverables behind that. And then they talked about weekly health checks to monitor and track the progress of those plans. Ms. Bassett gave a great report on incorporating Abbott into the middle school. And there was a summer institute. And so the goal is gonna be on organizational skills. And so that can look like utilizing notebooks and then note-taking strategies, of course, to prepare our students for high school. Dr. Moore talked about work with DEIB, and particularly maintaining a culture of dignity and then focusing on the belonging piece, and how there'll be building why it goes for DEIB, how there'll be belonging committees that will be established, and then just talking about the, how each, how there's each piece with these teams. We have our coordinator, and how all of this factors pretty much into improving our school improvement plan, and that's gonna be factored into that. And then Mr. Britt discussed some exciting things with the professional development, using tier-one instruction and getting real effective about that, having sort of like a universal language and framework so that teachers could have those interventions. And then talking about Marzano and looking at it through the new art and science of teaching. And then a little bit of some of the discussion with some of the summer work, feedback with curriculum writing, department meetings that were had, and then a new mentor and venture for new teachers, a support bringing in retirees. And then capping off meeting, we talked a little bit about monthly score cards and how our leadership team comes in. And then they survey and look at progress, go into the classrooms, and then how they're able to offer interventions to support our school leaders and teachers. And so that is just a little bit about what we discussed. They said it a lot better than me, and I'm really proud of the work. I'm very excited and really impressed with the work that they're doing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Safety Committee.
Well, Vice President, we'll get back. I'll kind of report about that, set it up the next Safety Committee meeting.
Okay. Citizens Advisory Committee, we will have a meeting September 17th at 6:00 p.m. And that'll conclude the meetings, the Community Engagement Committee meeting. We will, we will have a, we will have a Community Engagement Committee meeting. I will be getting with Ms. Natalie Johnson, and we'll come up with that. And that'll conclude those. I need a motion, please.
All right, so I move that the Board of Education approve the April 8th, 2024 Finance Committee leading board.
Second. Ms. Bobby.
It's Shelby. It's him.
I need to use this as well to my computer. It's him.
You can't get in for government safety.
Yeah.
These guys are very tough, dude.
I said yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mike, we'll get you.
How to reboot this computer?
Okay, thank you.
Motion, motion passes. Motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of approved policies EHBD on official intelligence use FFA memorials on facilities and grounds. K H Public gives to the schools an I G R I student. J G R I student.
Second.
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Watson. Thank you. Motion passes. Need a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the RQS Profile of Learner as President.
Good evening, Board. Great to see you again. So I have the opportunity tonight to share a, an artifact that is really an accompanying document to our strategic plan, and that is our Profile of a Learner. These types of documents exist in lots of school districts, and it really helps the school district get very intentional about what is it that we want our, not only just our graduates, but also all of our students, whether they're transitioning to kindergarten, to middle school, to high school, as well as the adult learners in the community, should aspire to obtain skills necessary for success. So rather than calling it a profile of a graduate, we intentionally looked at what is a profile of a learner here in Raytown, because we know it spans all ages and it also consists of our adults as well. So a little bit about this process, we brought a committee together with Scott Fuller from GND Associates this summer. That committee included representatives of staff, parents, community and business partners. He also had spent time in May visiting with focus groups that included middle school and high school students, middle school and high school staff, as well as other community partners. And as I mentioned, this is a direct component of the district's strategic plan and really serves as a clear understanding of the skills and dispositions we want for all of the learners in the district. And we will be using this profile to help align current and future strategic plan work. So some of the research that exists that we compared ourselves against, we looked at what are the current skills and future skills that industry is saying they need from the workforce. A lot of these terms, obviously, are familiar with, we are familiar with around communication, critical thinking, collaboration, or teamwork, as well as some other soft skills that we know employers are looking for. So as I mentioned, we talked with a wide variety of stakeholders. Specifically, we visited with businesses here locally in Raytown, as well as in the larger Kansas City metro area. What we heard back from those groups was that communication, collaboration, interpersonal skills, professionalism, willing to engage in challenging things, and empathy were all skills that all learners should strive to achieve. And so this is where we landed, attached in tonight's agenda is a full version of this document. But the language that we will begin to talk about as a profile of a learner is that all learners are academically sound. They are reflective, they're able to relate, they are contributors, and they are professional. And so we will be using this document to align to our future work, as well as our current strategic planning projects. And again, we're excited to bring this to our community as we continue to plan for and improve our school district. Happy to entertain any other, any questions the board might have.
Mr. Vice President, I just had, and this is just me out of curiosity. Saw that, noticed the shift from critical thinking to analytical thinking. Can you explain a little bit of where that shift came from?
From this slide here?
Yeah, the current versus future skills. I'm just curious.
You know, I don't know that I could really say exactly what the research meant or the differences between critical and analytical. I do, I do think critical thinking involves, you know, solving problems in new situations, applying what you know into new situations. Analytics probably tends to shift to how we use numbers, how do we calculate, interpret graphs and charts, where you can use critical thinking in other areas that don't involve numeracy. That would be my guess as to the difference between the two. Yeah. Yeah.
And I would also like to add to what Dr. Greiner has shared, because the information he's communicated is exactly correct. But oftentimes, we ask students to think critically, but after they've thought critically, then what do you do with it? And so it's about taking it apart, analyze it, and being creative with it all in the same vein. So I think it's taking the critical aspect and kind of disaggregating it to figure out what skills students need to have. Again, I can think critically, but then the question is, what do I do with it? So that's why the divide, I believe.
Well, I saw the. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
So I'd like to thank Dr. Greiner and his team for the work, but even more so for our stakeholders for engaging in this process. We've been talking about developing the profile of the learner. Oftentimes, you'll see school districts talk about the profile of a graduate. And as he indicated, this isn't just about what our students can do, but it's about what we can all do. And it's about us all learning and growing together to prepare our children to be globally competitive. So thank you, Dr. Greiner, and your work, as well as the work of the team and our community in this process.
Motion passes. Motion. For Mortensen's switchgear replacement.
Vice President, Nick, we have the Board of Food, Bread, and Electric to replace the storm damage switchgear at Raytown High School in an amount of $529,678.
Second.
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Gosh, it's an error, though.
You have to allow this statement. I think I've powered to answer any question, man.
Well, good evening, Vice Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Martin Knox. Not to put his business out there, but he was feeling ill before the meeting, so, yes, he was. He's been working hard, he's been working hard, so I sent him home. He said he needed to go home and rest.
I didn't know Josh got days off.
Well, he worked a full day before we sent him home, so we squeezed that out of him, so he got his daily rate. We got it out of him.
Can you just let us know a little bit about what exactly the damage was that was caused? Because over half a million dollars.
Yeah, that was, if you, I know Dr. Martin Knox sent an update to the Board about that beginning of the school year, prior to the opening of the school. And so there was an issue with some leaking into the electrical room, which caused those two, those breakers to break. Shit, to be technical. Obviously, with the starting of school, only a week away, we had to find parts. That was a problem. Our initial bids for those parts was like a sixty-week lead time, which would have put us not near a time for school to start. Then we're talking about electric for the whole of Raytown High School. So we started looking at backup plans. We found some places that could offer us generators. The generators to run a building of that side were somewhere around the neighborhood of $40,000 a week. And so when we looked at the expense for generators and the lead times, we eventually found the vendor who was willing to close production of what they were currently manufacturing to machine what we, what we needed. Obviously, with the shorter lead time, it increased the cost, excuse me, to us, but that was way more of a less expensive option than a generator and lead times for our previous bids.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Motion passes. Motion. For Orsec server replacement.
Vice President, we move that the Board of Education approves Sanger to replace the HVAC in the server room in the amount of $68,000, or $68,000 and $23.
Second.
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion for Dell Support renewal.
Mr. Vice President, I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of support from Dell in the amount of $77,875.
Second. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion to approve work on sale agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Sleep this September 9th, 2024 consent agenda as Savannah.
Second. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion passes. I would like to read this month's donations. A donation. Worldpool Care Account donates a Worldpool washer and dryer and $10,000 to West Ridge Elementary School. Like to say thank you to Worldpool. That's our only donation. Thank you so much.
All right. Mr. President, I move Board of Year in regular Board of Education meeting at 7:51 p.m.
Second.
Ms. Bobby.
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
She's second in heaven, dude. Second.
I've been wanting to do that for a long time.
Board. Mike. Mr. Watson.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.